Any other notice changes by any of the all of people? Okay, do I hear an approval of the official agenda with that? Well, the tax thing is going to be removed, so that will be.
Oh, has it? Yeah. Anything else? Oh, the mayor indicates that five A has been removed from the agenda, so, uh, do we know why or anything?
Uh, it was set by April four.
It was scheduled incorrectly, supposed to be April four rather than this. And if you also note under Departmental Business, uh, that's Department C five.
Right, it's been removed. C five in the Department. Okay. I can give you a more updated agenda if you'd like, if they change these things in the first minute.
They ought to end them now.
Well, they should have, that's right. Okay, with all of you noted, the changes on the agenda, the, uh, public hearing, uh, for the tax incentive financing plan has been deleted, uh, we have omitted in Departmental Business item four, the Building Codes and Planning Department, and we have deleted under the Election Department item number five. And all of you noted the changes. Do I now have a motion that we approve the official agenda with those changes?
I approve approval of the official agenda.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If it passes, all those who oppose, please. Uh, we will pass, uh, any comments, but more of all of them. Do we have approvals of the minutes of the regular recess meeting of February the first and the special call meeting of February the twenty-first?
I would move approval of the minute of February twenty-first meeting?
Yes.
I'll say.
And the special call of February twenty-second?
I've got some corrections.
Corrections, okay.
February twenty-first meeting, we have a, a call for approval for the second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, February twenty-first, and you said you had, uh...
I've got some corrections I need to give to this ten along.
Okay, well, we'll hold that to, uh, April meeting then. That brings us down to the public hearing tonight, we have a public hearing on the no smoking ordinance as recommended by the No Smoking Committee. Mr. Cox, I think you're in charge there.
Well, just, um, say tonight, um, that the advisory committee that we put together has met on several occasions, and we have come tonight recommending an ordinance that would prohibit smoking in indoor public places in the city of Starfall. This advisory committee was made up of a student representative, uh, two public health, um, participants from our community, as well as two members of the Restaurant Association, and finally, uh, three Aldermen, Alderman Davis, Alderman Corey, myself. We put together this group of stakeholders who had different opinions, who had different perspectives, different experiences, and we did what we were supposed to do. We listened, we compromised, and ultimately, we came to consensus with an ordinance that we developed fro- from scratch for Starfall. And so tonight, we'd like to, uh, to have a public hearing on that ordinance to provide another opportunity for the public to provide feedback. Of course, we have had a previous town hall meeting, as well as additional, uh, board meetings where we've heard comments on this smoking ordinance, but since we've worked so hard to develop consensus and we've, uh, worked so hard to incorporate public feedback, and in fact, that it's the law, uh, we'd like to call for a public hearing this evening on the no smoking ordinance as proposed. So, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any other comments from the board?
And would anyone like to get up to speak in, uh, favor of the smoking ordinance at, uh, at this time, this will open it for a public hearing, we've had lots of debate on this. Anyone who'd like to get up to speak in favor of it?
I'd be glad to.
Argue against?
Uh, I'm Lane Livingston, live at two thirty-nine Cryx Street. I'd just like to say that I've lived in the community, it was in Maryland, for that, uh, twenty-some-odd years, had a ban on smoking. Uh, I very much enjoyed it, I hope the mayor, vote of Ald- Alderman, will, uh, vote this ordinance in, I read it, seems reasonable and fair to me. Uh, I believe that it'll be the fairest to the restaurants if all are put under the same restriction, than if some do and don't, and you have to partial. So personally, I hope that you will adopt, and I like what I've seen here.
Anybody else that, uh, have all of you had the opportunity to get a copy of this? We've tried to have this out for the public and, uh, where you get copies and look at it and review it and, uh, digest it. Is there anyone who would like to speak against it? Yes, sir?
Uh, my name is Sam Tucker, currently president-elect, sitting off that salon page at Mississippi State University. I readdressed concerns group community has, um, that have recently been addressed to me. It's recently come to attention that Mississippi State University group community, fraternities and sororities would be included in the proposed smoking ordinance, where section two I and B is a public place, but upon passage, most be in compliance with the ordinance. Unlike other public places such as bars and restaurants, fraternities and sororities were not aware of their inclusion in proposed until recently, and have not had significant opportunity to determine their position on this inclusion. On behalf of Mississippi State University group community, I'd like to request that the board table this bill and allow the university council, panel of council, and individual chapters to determine their position on inclusion in this bill. I'd also like to request that upon determining their positions for necessary, representatives from Mississippi State University group community be allowed to meet with committee responsible regarding the smoking ordinance and express any concerns they may have. I know this bill has taken up much of the city's time, and I'm sure the board is ready to have a bone this issue, but I sincerely hope that in the interest of the public involved in the process, the board will consider allowing a amendment on additional time for concerned party to determine their position and discuss their position.
Thank you. Would you want to address that? Would you want to address that?
Uh, just, uh, one comment is, if you'll look at, uh, I believe, section nine of this proposed ordinance, this ordinance shall be subject to all other governmental jurisdiction rules and regulations, the laws pertaining to smoking. Uh, it would seem to me that fraternity houses fall under the rules and regulations of the university currently in place, and, uh, so what you're dealing with now is what you will deal with, is the long and short of it, just my opinion. Mr. Cox?
Anyone else would like to, citizens would like to speak, come forward, please. State your name, rank, serial number, I'll let you answer.
My name is Jennifer Breton, I'm a student at Mississippi State University, and, um, I just want to tell you that this is, I just want to reiterate what I said before in town hall meetings, this is a health issue, we're not trying to subject you guys out or anybody individually, this is a health issue, it concern all citizens in this town. I would like to say that this has been talked about for five months now, there have been town hall meetings, it's been published in the reflector for every time there's been a meeting, um, everything going on, when there was town hall meeting, it was published in the reflector, there've been six articles in the reflector, and I would like to know, I mean, like, why just now are you guys stepping forward? If you really had an interest in it, you would've stepped forward at the very beginning and come in at the beginning and stated your issues with this whole ordinance.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Tanya Meads, and I am an employee of Mississippi State University, I'm also a graduate student in public college in administration. I'm also a current advisor of Beta Tau Alpha, and I would like it to be known that according to national panelistic rules, no sorority woman may be allowed to smoke in the house, so I want to give that clear right now anyways. I'd also like to give out a little, a few statistics, because I am in support of the smoking ban. In nineteen ninety-eight, the last year for which there are records, the National Fire Protection Association estimates that there were fourteen hundred structural fires in collegiate housing facilities, including fraternities and sororities. According to the nation's leading insurer of Greek housing, only eight percent of all Greek housing facilities are currently protected by sprinkler systems, which I feel you shouldn't smoke if you don't have sprinkler system installed. The three leading causes of fire in collegiate housing are arson, cooking, and smoking. Fraternity and sorority housing averages a hundred and forty-one fires a year, or once every two point five days. While smoker fire alarms are present in ninety-three percent of all dormitory fires, fire sprinkler systems are present in only thirty-five percent of those same fires. Just to give you a few stats compared to fraternity and sorority housing versus dormitory. And the last point I'd like to make is, while fraternity and sorority housing accounts for only ten percent of fires on campus each year, it sustained damages five times the average cost of a dormitory fire, and the injury rate is twice as high.
Thank you, ma'am. Someone else had their hand up over there, won't speak, go ahead.
Yes, I'm, uh, I'm Laelaward, I'm a senior at Starfall High School. Uh, this, this weekend, I had the opportunity to finally download the final copy of this ordinance and read it word for word, and, uh, the only problem I really have with this ordinance, the element, is that there's no perimeter stated on the, uh, perimeter around the doorway, it says that an entrance is a doorway and adjacent area which leads to neighboring streets, sidewalks, parking lot, et cetera, but there's no perimeter around that doorway, so my problem is, is that I could walk outside of a restaurant, and I, I am, I am actually in favor of this ordinance, I think that's great that we're, uh, thinking about the general welfare, but, um, the, uh, ordinance states is that, uh, a smoker could be standing outside the door, and could be right next to the door, blowing smoke in my face. And, uh, the other issue was the, uh, entrances and exits on the outside of the building. Um, I actually work in a place of employment where, uh, a lot of people do smoke, and, uh, but there's no perimeter around the entrance or exit in the back of the building where they go and smoke, so I was wondering, you know, are you guys planning on putting a perimeter in this ordinance, or is it actually to the city attorney, is it legal to put a perimeter around the doorway, or, or what? That's just my only, uh, that's just my only opposition, other than that, I'm in favor.
Well, it's a, it's a good question, and one that we struggled with, if you remember from, uh, what was, uh, proposed, going back several months ago, there was some discussion on putting a specific number of feet from an entrance, and we worked with that as a committee, and what we found was that you can't put that type of a restriction, um, very easily within our community, because there are places that if you picked an arbitrary number, that you would in fact be out in the street, or you might actually be right into another building. And so what we worked on, and what we were able to gain consensus with the restaurant owners, is that you wouldn't be allowed to block an entrance, um, or be immediately proceeding an entrance or an exit. Um, and it was our feeling from the committee that that would achieve what we were trying to do, and have specific enough, specific enough language that restaurant and businesses could express that to their patrons, um, as well as be able to be specifically enforced if that became an issue. But that's why there's not a specific number, because all of our businesses are so varied around town that those numbers don't, uh, didn't do what we were, our intent, like the language that we ultimately selected, which is not to have it immediately proceeding or blocking an entrance or exit.
Can I, so, as it states right now, a person can't stand next to the doors?
That, in essence, that would be defined, th- the way you suggested, as something that would be immediately proceeding or blocking entrance or an exit. But you raise a good point, one of the reasons why we selected a, if this ordinance were to be adopted, a sixty-day implementation time, is because the, the committee felt that we as a city have a strong responsibility to go to these businesses, to go to these restaurants, and discuss this ordinance, and actually give very specific instruction and understanding about how that might apply, so that there's no confusion later on. We wanted to make sure we left in enough training, so those type of questions could be answered for each individual business, so that the business owner, as well as her patrons, would understand what that meant for them.
Other questions, other participants, yes, sir?
I'm Andrew Adams, I, I'm concerned about this repeal laws here. Does this mean that if this is passed, that in two years, we're gonna have to come fight this same fight again? And why is that?
It's something that, as a committee, we've, we've spent a good amount of time talking about. There are statistics that show in other communities, when they've passed smoke-free ordinances, that there has been, uh, no effect from an economic standpoint, or perhaps even a positive gain, and then there's been other statistics that have demonstrated the opposite. What we, because you have these competing statistics, what we know is that this hasn't been attempted yet in Starfall. So we wanted to, to put our time and effort in making sure that whatever ordinance we put together would be successful, that's why we worked so hard to, to gain consensus. But that being said, we wanted to have a, a reasonable amount of time, and the committee felt that two years was an appropriate amount of time to evaluate, um, and to consider, and for this board, and in fact, it'll be the exact same board here, would be reviewing this in two years, for us to make a decision to, um, to either extend this ordinance or to, uh, or to allow it to repeal. And it wasn't an effort to, um, it was a, in essence, a good faith effort to, uh, to evaluate the practical effects in Starfall, since we can't predict, yet we all feel very strongly that this is the right thing to do from a public health standpoint, and we also believe that as other communities, especially within the SEC, have done this, that in fact, this would not be, would not have a negative impact, but we want it to be, uh, fair and
Other citizens that would like to have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
Several things, I think, I don't wanna take all of mine here, but...
Well, I won't give you but three, ma'am.
You realize if you do this in two years, some of the businesses that are against it now may not need one, okay? Uh, the other one is, in terms of questions of the ordinance, who pays for signage? Is it the businesses pay for that?
Yes, sir.
So do we have to put up a signage for every ordinance that the city has? Public information is against the two ordinance, you're running to put up a sign for that?
Specific to this ordinance, we included a signage requirement, which would be one sign at the entrance of your building. Um, it appears, based on website research, this two-by-two international no smoking sign should cost less than ten dollars.
Okay, how many businesses are there that you saw?
A considerable number, fortunately.
That's what the two by two, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't understand, yeah. Uh, it starts out with, there is research, what research did you, did y'all look at?
The, the research body on, on this issue is, is considerable from a, and, and I'm sure you, you might even, um, say that there's research showing the other side, um...
What is the number one study that's quoted from, from EPA, or like?
I'm not familiar with exactly the one you're...
It's classified as a class A, okay? Especially with fake data, or it's prepared by a court. So my question is, what study are you looking in the rock?
It was indeed taken by a judge who was receiving money from the back of the street, and it was upheld by a higher court, didn't he, Martin?
It's, 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 it's no difference.
If you would address the board, please.
What I'm saying is, the studies that you refer to, no, okay? It's still the idea on the news. There's no difference in risk with this, except one, they don't want to hear that. That's one done by a world full of help, and that's, you can see what it said. That, that bothers me. The other thing I ask is, some of the private clubs, this ordinance not only bans smoking, but combines private club. I would ask that there be an exception put in there for that, to allow private clubs and private clubs not necessarily something that needs to hire as a club.
Thank you. Any other? Yes?
My name is Hunter Lipscomb, I'm the president of Kappa Alpha Order, and I, I'm concerned, not, not necessarily about the smoking ban, but the enforcement and the violations of the ban. As, as the fraternity president, I'm responsible for filling the house, and I'm also responsible for all the individual actions that my members may take. Now, it's no lie, with, you know, the fraternities are often stigmatized in negative ways, and this open invitation that the police can come in to, uh, make sure this ban's being enforced, which it would be, is just another opportunity for police to maybe see the fraternities in negative light, or take advantage of this to go inside fraternity houses, and we're concerned about that, again, because we're responsible for individuals, and it's just another chance to possibly make fraternities and sororities, mainly fraternities, look negative.
Someone else had a question, yes, sir?
Yeah, this is a minor point, I've been, this is the third meeting I've been to like this, and every time it comes up, this restaurant or that restaurant's gonna be out of business and shit for your time. Lived here twenty-three years, and I've seen a lot of restaurants come and go this time, with or without smoking, some were non-smoking, some were, I just don't find that argument as, as a valid argument, uh, both smoking or non-smoking. It's used as business practice, I imagine, if I was supposed to...
Thank you. Other comments? Yes?
Yes, um, I'm Joshua Andrews, I'm here representing the Lambda Chi Alpha fraternity, and my question would be, why are the fraternities not considered private residences? And, um, in what way, you know, we're here, neutral to the smoking act, we would just like ourselves removed as part of this ordinance, because we consider ourselves a private residence that is only available to our members and invited guests only. And as far as some of the other concerns, such as, you know, fires and sprinkler systems, the state legislature has passed a law where all Greek organizations across the state have to have plans submitted to the legislature by this July, so that all Greek organizations will have sprinkler systems installed by two thousand and eight. So that's not really an issue anymore, and I'd just like for y'all to address why we're not classified as a private residence, and why we should be under this ordinance.
I think Mr. Davis just, uh, justified that well ago, did you not?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back to section nine, this ordinance shall be subject to all other governmental jurisdiction rules and regulations, the laws pertaining to smoking. What does the university say y'all can do in your house as far as smoking?
It don't have a law.
This will be subject to the university's rules and regulations, anyway.
Okay, so if there is no specific regulation, does this override the fact that there is no regulation and say that we cannot smoke there?
This ordinance shall be subject to all other governmental jurisdiction rules and regulations pertaining to smoking.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, let's talk a second about that, to make sure there is no misunderstanding on my part, as well as anybody else's. Uh, Mr. Faber, or, uh, Davis, or Cox, uh, section nine, again, this ordinance shall be subject to all other governmental jurisdictions, rules, and regulations, and laws pertaining to smoking. Uh, is this section saying that if there is a federal installation of some sort, a state government installation of some sort, office facility, whatever, a county installation of some sort, a school district installation of some sort, then the rules of those different governmental or quasi-governmental units are the ones that are controlling on their facilities, not this ordinance? Is that correct?
Couldn't say it better myself.
Okay, is there any misunderstanding of that? Does the true gentleman understand that?
Yes, sir, so there, there, I mean, we don't...
Uh, so thus, a fraternity is an officially student, uh, body sanctioned organization...
So why are we even included in the, in the list?
Those are the city limits.
Uh, let me finish, let me finish a second. A student sanctioned organization, and so thus, whatever rules the university has for student organizations applies to the student organization. Likewise, a county facility, a state facility, a federal facility. Are you with it?
Yes, sir.
So whatever rules the university has on, uh, smoking, drinking, whatever...
And if there is no university rule already present, then would y'all's, this new ordinance, become that, that, that rule?
You go by the rules of your governing organization, in this case, the university. If they have none, there are none. Of course, I'd check that. Uh, Mr. Attorney, is that the correct interpretation of section nine?
Absolutely, I couldn't say it better myself.
Uh, thank you.
Are you clear, gentlemen? Those that raised the issue?
And so it does not matter if this is, uh, the SAE house on the old fraternity row, or the, uh, Delta Chi house on North Jackson Street. It's a student organization, university sanctioned, whatever rules the university has are the ones that apply, likewise county, state, federal, whatever.
Starfall separate school.
Starfall separate school district, uh...
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams?
I hate to quote, now, look, y'all. Section one, the first entry in the definition, margin is any premises where non-alcoholic or alcoholic beverages are sold or consumed. My, uh, my home is a premise, it says, any, any premises that could be generalization category pleasure that I think needs to be qualified, I would suggest that you simply put after any premises, the words "except" private residences, so that I can feel comfortable in going home tonight and having a nice cold, ice cold, cold, cold.
Other comments?
Just to add on to what John said, maybe say, "commercial premises," you know, something like that, right?
Other comments? Yes?
I'm from a customer, and I'm just recently down in Florida, and their restaurants are in all non-smoking, and I, I hate to tell you this, but they were packed with business. It did not affect their business whatsoever, they had plenty of business, so... Because every time I walked in, I said, "non-smoking," they said, "you don't have to worry, the whole place is non-smoking," at all the restaurants.
Mr. Mayor, one final thing on this fraternity, other organization things, so based on the interpretation of section nine, what is listed in section two D will be stripped. I, I see those two, uh, Mr. Faber, what do you think, in conflict with each other?
I agree with you.
So I will move that we strike that, uh, back in consensus or otherwise.
Any other comments? If there are no more comments, we'll run the public hearing on the smoking ordinance for conclusion. Thank you. That brings us down to citizens. Would you like, gentlemen, would you like to bring that forward?
Up to the committee members, uh, some of the audience might...
Would you like to go ahead and bring that up for approval of the ordinance that we have?
Yes.
Well, it's not, uh...
What, Jim?
Well, let's bring that up from, uh, where it is in the, uh, agenda, it is, uh, item that is placed, uh, where is it? Uh, item J, Roman numer seven, we bring that forward up to, we go ahead and make a, uh, a commitment on the policy there, do we have a motion that we approve the smoking ordinance with, uh, these basic changes?
Mr. Faber, Mr. Williams had asked about the premises definition under bars, do you have any guidance for us before we...
Well, when I came up with the definition of bars, of course, it's hard to try to cover all potential, uh, areas where this ordinance would apply. The difference, Mr. Williams, would be, is that the police department has no right, and the police department is the one that's enforcing this law, they have no right to go into your house to see if you're smoking, that's your private residence. So that's why I didn't feel it was necessary to include the word "somebody's personal residence" as a definition of what a bar is, because your bar, your house is not considered a bar, and, and they don't have the right to go in there and enforce that. Does that make sense to you?
Would, if we added the word "commercial" to premises, would that restrict the inten- I mean, certainly it was our intention that we're dealing with indoor public... I mean, certainly it was our intention that we're dealing with indoor public places...
Well, the problem with you, the reason why I didn't use the definition of "commercial", that means that, "commercial" means that it's for profit or being sold. If you could get around that definition, and somebody could come in and open an establishment, they're not in it for profit, and therefore, they wouldn't follow it. They could technically say they're not under the definition of "commercial establishment." That's why I didn't use the word "commercial." That was the thinking behind it.
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Faber, where you have the definition of "public place," you say it means any enclosed area in which the public is invited or in which the public is permitted. Next sentence is, "a private residence is not a public place." And, uh, you define private residence, rent zone, rented or leased, for temporary or permanent habitation. So you've specifically excluded from public place a private residence in those definitions. And then in Section 2, unlawful to smoking indoor public places, including but not limited to, wouldn't that cover the concerns of Dr. Williams?
I mean, that's specifically why we came, put the definition in. I'm just giving him another example of why it wouldn't apply in the example that he gave, because the police wouldn't have a right to go in your house.
You know, satisfied based on, because we've defined a public place as not a private residence or part of the ordinance, that there is no confusion there? Well, then, um...
Yes, sir. No?
Yes. Well, then I would move that, um... Well, then I would move that we would approve the ordinance to create rules and regulations for smoking in public places and places of employment as written, with the exception of under Section D to Section 2D, where we would strike, because of conflict in definitions in common areas and fraternities and sororities. Can I do so in the form of a motion?
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All have heard the debate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it carries. We may have a... We have a very large crowd here from Starville in Motion, I believe. We have a presentation, and I propose that we move that up next on our list here to go ahead and work with that. That's item G of Port Business, and we, at this time, will listen to the grant request for Starville in Motion. If you were, well, they're already done that. If you were here for the smoking issue, feel free to leave.
I will. They said nothing, everybody.
Yours is just for me, and the two actions from here will be passed down.
That's exactly right.
Everybody else is...
No, hell no. I ain't gonna face this life. Hurry up, get your...
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. And if I can't get this started, we will default to our old version. What we have today is, we want to bring you up to date on a project that we've been working on for the last approximately six months. And just to give you some background, the Safe, Accountable, Flexible, Efficient Transportation Safety Act, a Legacy for Users, that's the actual name of the bill, Safety Lu, was funded by the federal government this past summer, and it's the major mechanism for funding transportation in, throughout the nation. And I'm just gonna give up on this, if you don't mind.
I tried, I don't know what else to say.
So we'll default to the paper version. Anyway, under this particular transportation act, funding act, transportation enhancements are a set aside for safe routes, actually, multi-use and bike paths and multipurpose paths throughout the country. There is, and I wanted to quickly jump ahead and explain that there is a totally separate pot of money for safe routes to schools, which deals with providing transportation routes to primary and secondary schools throughout the country. So we have before us right now a short-term opportunity to gain some funding for bike paths in this town. Because even though the federal funding act covers a five-year time period, MDOT will only be doing one round of funding. So we'll be able to submit a proposal for multi-use paths in the city of Starkville this coming summer, and then that will be it for five years until a new transportation bill is passed. So most of you have already seen the path that we're suggesting along Lynn Lane. It begins on campus at Mississippi State University, extends down Locksley Way, takes a slight jog down Montgomery, then down Lynn Lane, all the way to Industrial, and then we're proposing that actually go up Industrial to Railroad, where it would terminate at a future Rails with Trails project. So you would be able to connect not only the Rails to Trails all the way to campus, but you would also be connecting a number of communities, residential housing for students who could use it to get to campus, as well as a number of our city parks, the multiplex, DE Park, Boys and Girls Clubs, are all along this proposed route. So what we're proposing is an eight-foot multi-use path on both sides of the street. It's eight feet to provide enough room for both people using bicycles, as well as joggers and walkers, because we're hoping to promote the use of this particular path by families getting to the sportsplex for soccer, T-ball, things like that. We're also proposing that it be on both sides of the road, and that the traffic be, that the pedestrian and cycling traffic go with the vehicle traffic, even though they're separated. And the reason for that is that that cuts down tremendously on the vehicle-cycling interaction, and therefore, the accidents that occur. Because the problem is, was when you have one path, it tends to be crowded, with people going both ways, and vehicles, when they're crossing that path, don't actually look both ways. So on the advice of some MDOT safety engineers, we went with the two-path version as opposed to just one path. The total cost for what we're proposing right now, which would be 7.5 miles of path, would be approximately $2.5 million. And the city's portion of that would be $2.2 million. The remainder would be the NSU portion of the project. And they've committed to connecting from Locksley, down, down the hill, onto campus, through to Jones Drive, near Sorority Road. Now, what that means is that, under current MDOT regulations, cities must present a 20% match in-kind. In other words, you do not have to raise cash and match it, rather, it can be in-kind contributions. Now, those in-kind contributions can be made by other federal dollars, except MDOT dollars. We can accept donations of materials and services. Preliminary engineering studies are considered an in-kind donation. Previously purchased materials, such as limestone, asphalt, or things like that, could be used as an in-kind contribution, in addition to donated labor, and of course, donated cash. And one of the points that I wanted to make was the fact that we are going to look over the next month or so at what other cities have done with their experiences in terms of getting public commitment and public contributions to support this kind of recreation. Things like adopt a mile, buy a brick, sponsor a sign, those sorts of things, to help defray the cost of the actual match that we need to make. Timeline is pretty quick. Right now, we need to be finishing up the budgets, we need to be holding our public hearings, we need to be moving forward on this. We already have, with your approval, tentatively scheduled a public meeting at the sportsplex for April 11th and 16th, in which we would have to invite all interested parties, and we would specifically invite by mail all property owners along the route. This application will probably be due to MDOT by the end of May or later. I spoke with our contact at MDOT this afternoon. She indicated that the rules and regulations are still being ironed out, but she expects that once they hit the streets and the requests for proposals are made, that there will be a very short turnaround for the sort of document that we're being asked to present. So that takes us through May. Funding would become available August or later of this year. And of course, the fiscal year begins October 1st. And what we're proposing to do is to phase this, so that it would cover two fiscal years of the city, so that we can spread out that matching cost as well. So what we're asking from, from the board, and what would facilitate us moving forward on this particular project, is an expression of support from the board, that this proposal is worthy of consideration, that we should invest the time and effort and continue moving forward on this, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done before a final proposal could be completed. In addition, a commitment by the city to review and validate the cost estimates that we've developed within the next thirty days, so that we know, we're fairly confident about the numbers that we're using. I am using, uh, estimate, cost estimates provided by the city, but I'd like an engineer, I'm not an engineer, I'm a research scientist, and I'd like a traffic engineer to be looking over my shoulder at these numbers and making sure they're absolutely right, and that has to come from the city. And then finally, anticipation that you will see this proposal, and then in a formal form, sometime in April or May, for a final vote, and also a letter of commitment to MDOT to support this, this project. And that, in a nutshell, is what we're proposing. Thank you very much.
We have questions for me.
Ron, I'd just like to thank you for doing all the legwork on this grant. We, of course, establish as a priority a viable and walkable community, and this would take us one step further, connecting all the way from Teapark through the city, Lynn Lane, to the university, and that's pretty exciting. You said a couple of things, and it sounded like you've already received a commitment from the university or seeking a commitment from the university.
We are working with the, with the university right now, and of course, we will, we will need their commitment as well, because it will be a joint proposal from the city of Starkville and Mississippi State University to MDOT, since they're going to be responsible for their portion of the bike path.
And it sounded like I've understood you correctly. If we're able to proceed with this, this would be our first and only opportunity, in a sense, for the next five years, that if, if we're not able to proceed with this, at this time, it'd be another five years before we'd be able to pursue this type of grant.
At least. Because Safety Lu was two years late. So conceivably, the next round of funding would be seven or eight years down the line.
Mr. Webb, I know you've looked at this document and worked with him, and here recently, do you have a sense of the in-kind match, and how we might be able to, to take care of our portion of the in-kind that's required?
Well, the only way we can do in-kind without blowing our budget and our street department would be some type of labor, or equipment usage, or engineering services. And of course, anytime you try to commit $400,000, even $200,000 for two years, you're going to have to give up some projects that these particular laborers would be, equipment operators of equipment would be doing. So we need to look at it real closely and see, and he mentioned the materials that we might have. We don't have any separate stockpiles of asphalt already purchased, or any type of equip, or material that they would be using on there. The only thing that we would have would be in-kind labor or engineering services or something of that sort.
Is it something that you feel like you would need to have a little more time to review? I mean, I know in general, people get excited that if we're able to invest a certain amount of in-kind services, $400,000, in this case, we'd be able to get $2 million, but at the same time, as you said, if this is taken away from other priorities like streets and, and others, that would be an issue for us.
We really, we'd need to look at, see how much they would allow for different phases of engineering work, what kind of monies they would take as an in-kind, if they would be able to say, "we're gonna do $400,000 of engineering," there's a certain amount that they would allow, and we need to see how much that would be. And you mentioned preliminary, what did I, did you know about construction engineering?
I believe that's included.
Oh, okay. See, it might be that we could, we could do a bit of it by that. Then we could look, see if there's any labor-type work that we could do with our equipment. We need to look at the plan a little more further.
In any case, all these things need to be investigated and so forth, so I would move that we give preliminary, preliminary approval to the Starville in Motion group and their appropriate committees and subcommittees to proceed with the putting together of an application for the facilities outlined tonight. And that, of course, the application come back to the city, and the city would be the lead agency in the application for review and final approval prior to submission.
That's a form of a motion?
It was.
So we have a second. We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please show by saying aye. All those opposed? Thank you, sir. Brings us down to citizen comments. We'll have a session where we have three minutes allowable for citizens that may have any comments.
Ron, would you be so kind as to hit the power button on the malfunctioning this button? Thank you.
Dr. Walker, are you, are you trying to amble up here to the front and say something?
Do you need some help? Come over here and stand on the side over here if you'd like to.
I don't know whether you or Dr. Cole had first recognition, but, uh, go ahead.
I'm, tonight, while, while the discussion was going on about the smoking ordinance, I've thought about this before when I've come to other meetings. Some of us don't hear well, and I'm one of those. Now, I met Dave McMullin, didn't hear two out of five words, and I've probably heard three out of five words. I would like to suggest that the board, or the city, or somebody buy a sound system for the ordinance. And you know how that works, people, you know, microphone in front of everybody, you got one standing by here, back here for comment. When somebody turns their back to the audience...
You can't hear.
Can't hear. You know, and you, and the board sits up there, and you talk among yourselves, and you face each other, we can't hear back there. And so...
Have you tried, I'm hearing aid.
I've gotten hearing aids before. But that was just a suggestion, that's my comment. I'd like to see you consider buying some kind of sound system in the future.
Thank you. And my comments to Dr. Walker, we were colleagues at the university, and he retired, praise the Lord.
Mr. Cole, I believe?
No, would you care to go ahead? Please go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Allen.
Good evening to the mayor and board of all. In recent meetings, the people have said that they could see us all, but they couldn't And at the two last few meetings, once this table is moved, it's so sensitive that you could easily throw everything off. So, uh, we are asking that, once this table is set, and sound, at least movement, you can throw everything off. They were saying that everything sounded like Mickey Mouse. They couldn't understand what I was saying, they couldn't understand, they could see us, but they couldn't understand that what we were saying. us, but they couldn't understand that what we were saying. Just complex, the citizens are getting tired.
The board is also tired.
We don't understand if officials take bribes or whatnot for the consequences of that, but we are tired. The system to the mayor, we understand what that is. You do not fight the mayor, you try to wait with him. The people are tired. We need, if we're going to get anything done, let's work together. The people are tired, the people feel a whole lot better if they could hear a hammer ringing, and let's move to something else and still stall it, whether it be personal or not. We need to get something done.
I believe I come before you as a person, man who needs no introduction. It should be apparent that I am not here, by the way, this is a written statement, and if I do not, am not allowed to finish, I will yield the floor to my wife for her three minutes that she can finish. It should be apparent that I am not here to thank Mr. Camp for veto of the justice complex. Many people I have talked to, many people, since the veto have told me they share my disapproval of the action and have asked me to continue speaking out. Because feasibility study of Stark property is on the night's agenda, I believe the justice complex is a valid topic of the comment. At the end, I will make, like Jonathan Swift, a modest proposal. If you favor, you may be rest assured, Jonathan Swift's proposal was to kill all the lawyers. That would not be mine. My first comment is the attack at the last meeting on Mr. Stark, timing and motives are uncalled for. I believe Mr. Stark acted in good faith with a genuine offer. I believe he waited to act until he felt site issue had degenerated to a point where a new solution was required. If one wishes to pursue timing and motivations, there are other recent actions regarding this complex that should be subject to the same scrutiny. Second, I have never had any objection to a downtown site. Provided a suitable site to be found, the police and court functions would be fully served in a unified manner, and construction would be at the least possible cost. I believe Mr. Camp's proposal does not meet any of these criteria. No matter which of Mr. Camp's figures that he has been quoting, one chooses to believe his proposal is vastly more expensive than the alternatives that we've addressed in the referendum. By splitting the sites, appears the total cost of Mr. Camp's choice will exceed eight and a half million dollars. This is far greater than the two million dollars he promised at the last final mayor's debate. Mr. Camp's plan is at least two million dollars more expensive than a site at the Coca-Cola plant, and even if the entire cost of extending hospital road, which will be done anyway, were added to the Stark site, the cost of Stark's option would not exceed Mr. Camp's plan. In addition, the city would receive land for a fire station. I learned today that the city asked for that land for the fire station of Stark. An irony of the situation is that judicial complex mess that we're in, which, yes, many people are getting tired of, is resulted in interference orchestrated by Mr. Camp and one previous alternate in putting this complex at the original selected site. Had this interference not occurred, the justice complex would have been completed and in use today at a turnkey cost of approximately five million dollars. A cost increase of three and a half million dollars is a lot to pay for one guy's money. The location for Coke site appears to give it an edge over the Stark site, as Stark said agreed to that. The Coke site is at the geometric center of Starkville and is on a major thoroughfare that gives it better visibility and access than do Millsap site and the site on North Jackson. By comparison, the Millsap site is very near an elementary school, is bordered by railroad track, a nine eleven concern issued by state about the police, suffers from the same restricted street access as does the current city hall police station we're running now. It is apparent to many that Mr. Camp vetoed the referendum because he feared that voters would not support it. He is only able to sustain that veto because some of you are determined that the justice complex must be of Mr. Camp's choice regardless of the cost or an opportunity for the people to be hurt. Mr. Camp claimed, and I have seen this in writing several times, his election to office is the only referendum he needs. Only twenty-five percent of the registered voters participated in the election. Mr. Camp receives sixty percent of this, which is a total of fifteen percent of all registered voters. Contrary to his view, fifteen percent of the voting public is not a mandate and is nowhere near the number that would be needed to pass a bond referendum. In the view of many, Mr. Camp's only accomplishments as mayor have been polarize Starkville to an extent that I have not seen in thirty-one years that I have lived here. Polarizations resulted from hitting special interest against the best interests of Stark. In addition to the justice complex, examples include the radiology clinic, the COVID issue, and the attempt to dismiss the members of the planning and zoning commission who in recent years have felt curbed of self-serving actions of developers. Mr. Camp's vision for a judicial complex would burden the permanent residents of Starkville with a long-term debt for fragmented police court arrangement, which is the poorest of the three alternatives. This is not leadership, this is action to our friend. Finally, to the special interest who support Mr. Camp, I make the following challenge. If you want this gold-plated solution so badly, then go out and raise two million dollars out of your own deep pockets and use this to reduce the public cost to the price for which the justice complex could be built at a better location. I believe the site location issue will be mewed because there's enough people disgusted with Mr. Camp going on, said any bond referendum he supports will fail. Now for my modest proposal. Build a justice complex at whichever site is functionally sound and requires the least cost. Take the savings estimated at least two million dollars and use this savings as seed money to obtain a major grant that would be used, would be applied to urban renewal projects that will benefit all citizens of Stark. A good example or a starting point would be the construction of a new city hall on Main Street. That would be a good place to start. Thank you very much.
Any other citizen with a comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I was going to say this before that, and I don't have any particular interest, personal interest in this, other than to say, thank you for vetoing the proposal for the dental referendum. From what I've read and heard, it would have been very confusing for the public, and it would have been very confusing the results of how do you interpret cost and location, et cetera, et cetera. I personally am for the general enlivening the center of the city somehow. I don't care if it's a piece of land there. I hope you can come to some agreement on one or two ways in which we can make the city better of Stark, continue to enhance that, and then come to the public and say this or this perhaps, if you choose to make even one, say, we've worked it out, here's what we can agree to. Now, do you agree with us on how to fund it or how to do this? I think that would be good for me, for the public. I think what would have come would have just been extremely confusing, not helpful to you at all, and certainly not helpful to me.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I have a little concern, sanitation. I guess the mutton pick up trash, you know, the trash day for my street. I notice when they come through, they pick up...
Could you tell us who you are, maybe where you live, if we can get a little bit better idea of the street you was talking about?
Our curbsway, seven seven one Vine Street, Starkville. They come along and pick up the trash. Well, you know, they leave it just as nasty, the trash wouldn't pick up.
Mr. Bush, is the trash bank in the banks?
No, this is bag, you know, like the dude that's on the road on the street, like the fruaries and sticks and stuff that they have piled up, they don't have, pick it up.
You're talking about, you're talking about the debris, the limbs, the brushes, not talking about the garbage?
Yeah, not the garbage.
That's what make that distinction.
Okay, well, this is like limb stuff and trash that you put on the road for them to pick up. Somebody, it's all out in the street rather than on the truck. And you know, the sweeper comes through occasionally, but you know, unless we get out there and clean up ourselves, the trash that just left after cars and everything is spread out all over the street, I don't think it'll look nice for the community.
Well, that's a service that we contracted out, and maybe the mayor can address how we can do it.
Actually, I'd like to ask, does our sanitation department hand have anything she'd like to say in regards to that?
I've really heard the part, I'll show you.
Oh. I apologize.
Stark Recycle Center.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bush, I appreciate your question. Mayor and board, I'd like to answer, please. We have gotten several complaints, as you just stated. We're trying to iron out some things. We've been working with them now for about six to nine months, twenty-six to nine months. We're trying to iron out the contract, there was some, how do I put this? There were some things in the contract that were not, we were not seeing the same thing. The contract was not written, as you first said, Rodney, in the language where it would be taken in just one way. It was written where each person that had, had a different direction they could go in, any direction they could go. Am I right, Rodney? Okay.
Mr. Webb, the bottom line is, the brush is not on your supervision control, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, you're referring to the board that you are responsible for the debris pickup. Is that what you're telling us?
I'm responsible for the contract. The contract is written in the sanitation department.
Let me make sure I understand this. You're responsible for the garbage pickup, is that correct?
Restless your garbage.
Okay, now, the board has contracted out the debris pickup to another entity, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you are not responsible for the debris collection?
In the contract, it states. Am I right, Mr. Weber?
Mr. Burke, is this, there's an issue that came up regarding the meaning of some language in the contract that I had to review, and so right now, it's dispute, this prior contract that was entered into, there's dispute as to the meaning of some of the language of the contract. And so I've given my interpretation, they come back with their interpretation, and so that's where it is right now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burke.
So I, probably don't know about that, so that's what she's talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. I'll have it sorted, of course. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know whose responsibility it is, who wrote the contract, who's the answer to the contract, but some, whoever responsibility it is, they need to, it needs to be cleared up because they are doing a poor, poor job, as Mr. Bush said, in picking up and cleaning up debris.
Don't disagree with that.
So whoever's responsible for it, Attorney Faber, will you please get this straightened out so we will know who to look to for this?
Yes, ma'am, yourself, as I said, this just came to my attention last, week before last, I was on vacation last week, and so...
Thank you.
I've heard about the board, Mrs. Boyd monitors that and coordinates with the pickup service, and so she's continuing to monitor that and continuing to try to make sure the definition in the contract fit the understanding of both parts, and we continue to struggle with that somewhat, but we're trying to iron it out and make sure they pick up where it's appropriate.
Any other citizens with your three-minute comment?
I'd just like to say on Highway twenty-five, these last two recent rains, the coverts are stocked up, debris is in the coverts, and the water's coming over into our parking lot. So I called the city twice.
Did you talk to Mr. Webb's office?
No, I didn't talk to Mr. Webb, I called street park.
Street park.
I thought that's what, when I should have called.
Any other citizen comment? Okay, well, mayor has no business tonight. This brings us, would y'all like to take a quick break, maybe a five-minute break? We'll take a five-minute break at this time, we'll come back and pick up on more business.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice
This brings us down to the board business, and the first item on the board business, a report from the budget committee, and I believe y'all have a few items on here.
We do under the item of a report, this or that, carry recommendation isn't just a report from our committee meeting. At the last board meeting, there was a request for us to review the on-call pay for business for various departments within the city. And in preparation for that meeting, we did a survey of other Mississippi municipalities that showed that in some areas, we're right in line, and other areas that we might be out of step. And we also discovered that there was some different methodologies for how other municipalities compensated those members on on-call. We fully realize this is an important issue to the operation of the city, and because it is so important, we'd recommend, and we'd report out, that we're looking for the new personnel director and the CAO to fully and thoroughly research the law as it relates to on-call pay, to do a more complete survey of municipalities throughout Mississippi, and then to report back to the mayor and board with their recommendations for how to proceed with this issue.
Okay. Bring us to the report from the Organization Operations Committee. Mr. McLauren?
Mr. Mayor and board, just to make you aware that we met for a fairly extended period of time in our last meeting, considered some ten or so agenda items, a number of which are listed under board business here, and so, Mr. Mayor, with that, just as a report, I will comment on those things as we get to them.
Okay, very good. First item is consideration of reorganization proposal for additional court staffing to include full-time court personnel and the leasing of two part-time personnel positions. And I believe that has been brought up with the budget committee as well as the committee.
Yes, sir, and if it would please, the board, I'd love to have Mr. Rook and possibly the judge, if he'd like to, to just present the recommendation and the request for hiring those two personnel so that we could move forward with that decision and all.
Might as well take that item up as well as to have that two full-time court operational personnel, if y'all would be in position to say, answer questions pertaining to both
Judge Ishi, I'm here. Budget committee, February fifteenth, two thousand and six. During that meeting, I requested to allow the hiring of two additional full-time deputy clerks, as due to an increase in the caseload that we're all committed to, and also the collection of fines. It also came up that one of these positions could be created by combining two part-time student working positions into one of the full-time deputy clerk positions. One of the deputy clerks would also obtain a collections clerk. The primary duty of this clerk would be to oversee and maintain payment plans, and they could also generate and maintain an overdue account report, if I, usually linked to fines. They could issue letters to these individuals. If the individual fails to respond to a letter, then this clerk could prepare an order to show cause, which would have the individual report in front of the municipal judge and explain to the court why they had not paid their fines. If this individual fails to appear in court, the clerk could then prepare a process that they want for that individual, once the warrant is signed by the municipal judge. The second clerk would be a deputy court clerk, and this clerk would assist with the general preparation of court activities, that would help work the window, collect payments, prepare affidavits and complaints, conduct record checks, enter new cases into the computer database, et cetera. I also recommended for both of these positions to start at grade seven, step one, which is a salary of twenty thousand, thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Further, if the board does approve these two positions, I would also ask the board to consider allowing the current... to consider allowing the current part-time student workers to re standing to remain working with the court through the end of the semester. Any questions?
I had been concerned about the student thing, but as you said, you would allow them to wait till the end of the semester, which I think would be best.
Mr. Rook, if we were to hire this collections clerk, or deputy court clerk slash collections clerk with that, eliminate our need for our contract, the collection agency that we utilize.
I thought, uh, that, uh, we did use credit bureaus as corporate, or in Alabama, uh, they have helped us to collect sometimes. However, I think that, uh, the performance is low. And I feel that we do a better job right here now as a collections clerk. Once that clerk is trained and up to rank, I really don't see the need...
And currently, our arrangement with them is how much... where they get twenty percent of what they collect?
For everything that help us collect, we only get twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Right.
So, you're answering the case to that question.
Other questions?
Uh, Mr. Rook, if we were to give permission to hire these, uh, well, it would... at this time, it would be two additional people, because you were saying here in your proposal that these students would remain till the end of the semester. Uh, in our committee meeting, budget committee meeting, that was one of the things that I was so adamant about, is that I did not want the student workers displaced before the semester was over, because I felt that they were depending on their employment to finish out the semester. So, what I had in mind was that the others come on board after that, but you're asking that permission to advertise if we approve, so that means like now?
I'm asking for permission if the board accepts this, I'm asking for all permission to advertise the sentence function.
Okay, if that was granted, and you brought these other people on board, where would you have all these people? Where would you put all these people? What would they be doing?
One clerk would be in the current court clerk's office, my little sister. And the additional clerk would be at this desk, or the next clerk. They'd be out here in the court. We don't have a next desk.
Because that was a concern that I asked, uh, Ms. Rook.
We will find... The board will...
Mr. Rook, are we talking about timing the hiring of one of the positions to coincide with the part-time positions, uh, leaving at the end of the semester?
No, sir, I'm asking for both positions to be approved.
I understand, are we talking about filling one of the positions at the time the two leave? Are we gonna have overlap of two student workers and two positions?
An overlap. However, I can tell you now, one of my student workers, uh, leaving, so we will... the board approves to have an overlap of two clerk and one part-time student clerk.
And if it please, Board, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve the reorganization proposal for additional court staffing to include the two full-time court personnel, and that at such time as the end of the semester, that we would eliminate, uh, from the department the two part-time personnel positions, as well as to authorize advertising for the two clerk positions.
Second. Have a motion of the second. We've discussed it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
That brings us, uh, for the consideration of approval placement of M S U. stencils in the main business district of Starwood Streets. Bill, are you handling that tonight?
Yes, sir, I am. Uh, at your place this afternoon, you found a memo from me to discuss in this item. We have a good cost on the, um, actual aluminum stencil. The company in Jackson makes stencils, have said it give a cost somewhere pretty close to fourteen hundred dollars per one time stencil that we can do over and over. As long as we take care of it, we... it could last forever. The cost to have the logo applied with thermoplastic material for seven or eight intersections, uh, would be thirty-five hundred dollars, most of which is a mobilization charge just for coming down here from, uh, New Albany or wherever they're from. That it could be done cheaper if they were already down here doing some other type of street work, uh, for a total cost of forty-nine hundred dollars for the first application. We could, if money... money usually is a problem. We could, uh, buy the stencil, use just regular street paint the first time, do it with city forces, and then the next year, when we have, uh, street striping going on, that particular craft would be here at that time. We could get a much... actually, we could probably just absorb the cost of the stencil in the street striping and never even notice it. So, that wouldn't be my recommendation.
I'm sorry, the last sentence was what? That would be your recommendation?
Wouldn't be my recommendation.
The stencil absorbed just the painting?
The thing about painting, the thermoplastic, is we would have to wait... it'll last five to six years, so we wouldn't want to put it on a street that's destined to be overlaid next year anyway, because we'd come in there and waste the cost of it. So, what I would recommend we do is do it in paint now, and then every time we overlay a street, put it down in thermoplastic, which would be more permanent and last just as long as the overlay would.
Can I, of course, if you think, do that where it would look good?
Yeah, I think so, with street paint, yeah. Of course, they can't do it with the other.
Mr. Webb, haven't there been other S E C. cities that have done similar sort of things on their intersections?
It's my understanding that they have, yes.
This is based upon what some other cities have done?
Exactly.
I think Tuscaloosa University of Alabama's done this, but...
Well, I like it, and, uh, based upon Mr. Webb's recommendation, I would like to motion approval of the request.
Do we have a second to Mr. Corr's motion?
I'm gonna second, Mr. Mayor. You don't need to die. Let's vote on it.
We have a motion and a second. It's been discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Oh, wait, before we vote, I... I wanna... I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Not before, uh, the motion, but since the motion. Uh, where... I know it says on city streets at downtown intersections, but I want to know specifically what intersections are we...
It's my understanding, uh, yourself, that they want to do it Montgomery and University, or Montgomery University, Jackson University, or Maine, Lafayette and Maine, and Washington and Maine to start with, and then there was some talk about going to Lampkin and doing, uh, the same streets, down Lampkin Street, Washington, uh, Lafayette, Jackson, and Montgomery. I'm not sure how we would do Montgomery and Lampkin since there's a railroad going through it and angles, and that's why I got seven or eight intersections. That was my understanding, and that is what the question was.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Will now vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Bill, can you stay there, because we've got consideration advertising for a position of city engineer, and there might be some questions asked.
You ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, one of the things considered in past Organization Operations Committee meetings was the, uh, ultimate hiring of a new city engineer to replace Mr. Webb, who has announced his retirement from the city. Uh, as much overlap as we could have would be, uh, appropriate for the person to, uh, learn systems and placements and so forth. I remember back some years ago, uh, when there was no overlap with Country Jones, some of you old timers will remember, and we still don't know where some things are, because they were all in his head, uh, and never written down. Uh, we need to get as much from Mr. Webb's head, though I have some trepidation saying that, as we can. Uh, so, uh, it is the recommendation of the O N O. Committee to the board for its consideration that we go ahead and advertise for the position of city engineer. Uh, there is, of course, an existing job description, which, uh, I think we would like, Ms. Rook, to see circulated, so we can eyeball it, uh, not having done this in some years as far as that position is concerned. Uh, and, uh, I would so move.
Second. We have a motion of the second that we advertise for a position of city engineer. Any further discussion?
Bill, could you get with whoever actually advertises this position in lieu of not having a personnel officer, and make sure they put it in appropriate places for engineers as well, or just starting a mailing for other papers?
Uh, any further discussions?
Uh, why don't we just, uh, add that as a friendly amendment to the motion, that it be placed in appropriate places for, uh, being able to be seen and reviewed by engineer?
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Uh, brings us down to consideration of creating a new position for assistant general manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, by light token, uh, we have been in conversation with the general manager of the electric department, Ed Haddaway, uh, who has recommended, and the Organization and Operations Committee, uh, felt that this was appropriate, uh, much like the position of, uh, city engineer, though Mr. Haddaway has not announced retirement or anything, uh, but there is value in a person coming aboard, uh, with the requirements of, uh, professional engineer, electrical engineer, uh, a registered professional electrical engineer to also work under Mr. Haddaway, learn the system, uh, be prepared, uh, possibly to advance, uh, should Mr. Haddaway decide to, uh, retire at some point in the... in the future, and we would recommend your consideration of that.
Is that a form of the motion?
And I will make it in the form of a motion that we create a position of assistant general manager of the electric department. We authorize the, uh, drafting of a job description for that position, uh, again, circulated to the board, and advertised appropriately, uh, newspapers, journals, uh, whatever is appropriate for, uh, a registered professional electrical engineer, uh, and I would be happy to some of it.
Second. We have a motion of the second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Chairman, um, I certainly support the committee's action. Just want to ask the chairman a question. Could we just create the position tonight, and let's look at the job description before we advertise? I would like to see this job, it's a very important job description. You have an objection, Mr. Chairman, plus just look at the job description before we advertise?
Uh, I certainly have no objection, Mr. Perkins. How about if, uh, once the job description is drafted, it's circulated, uh, by Mr. Haddaway, the appropriate city personnel? Uh, Mr. Webb can also help with that type, uh, that it be circulated to all the members of the Board of Alman, uh, for, uh, their approval or objection prior to any advertising.
Right, one important thing I want to mention, Mr. Chairman, do we want to make sure we go ahead and include in the motion, that we want to include that one requirement be that the person have some type of electrical engineering background? Would you include that in the motion?
Uh, that would also...
Oh, I... I want to make sure.
Okay, yes, that, uh, a primary job requirement be a registered professional electrical engineer.
I believe that was included in your description.
Right.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
We have a motion on the floor with a second with a few adjustments. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It brings us down for consideration of a formal report for a Board of Alman A D A. Task Force Advisory Committee, and I believe that was also...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, there was consideration at the Organization and Operations Committee of the, uh, continuation of the, uh, advisory committees that was formed, uh, in the last administration relative to, uh, A D A. requirements and so forth. Uh, Alman Cox has, uh, taken sort of a lead in formulating ideas on this, so I would, uh, ask him at this time if he has comments he'd like to make on this, uh, proposal.
Sure, thank you, Alman Cox. I'd say that this has been discussed greatly since the term began, and the mayor and the Operations and Organization Committee is determined the need for an advisory body to help the city in issues that affect persons with disabilities, and based on that, I'll be working over the next two weeks with Mr. Faber, uh, to present an establishing resolution at the next quarter.
Okay, so there will be a motion tonight. Thank you.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Since we already had one established, do we need another resolution to reestablish?
Well, I think what he'd do is go back and say, look at some of the language that was, uh, associated with that, and I'm not ragging.
Certainly, some of the ramifications on the day is the first, as I recall, was simply an informal mayor appointed, and we are formalizing that as a board appointed committee.
Brings us down to the department of business, and the first is building, coach, and planning department.
Mayor Boyd, uh, you have before you... the first item was the approval of the preliminary plant. These are actions of the meeting of the planning commission earlier this month. They requested... they recommended approval of this preliminary plant for twenty-seven lots.
Sure, it's not twenty-nine... Twenty-nine lots.
Excuse me, twenty-nine lots, uh, off of South Montgomery. The second item that they sent a recommendation, is the final plant approval for Pearson Place subdivision, phase one of the... we got on Hostel Road, this is Pearson Place. This is the new development out there, and it will be done for three phases, and it will be a medical office complex with C one zone. Everything is in place on that, except for the fact that they have not been able to pave the street because of weather, but they have deposited a bond with us to cover that pavement, so the planning commission will need approval of this. The meeting of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals of March sixteenth was to hear a request for a, uh, Ms. Central Fedorovich, for permission to live in a travel trailer at four fifteen Cheekin Street. This is a variance to the zoning ordinance. An accessory structure is secondary to the operation of the building lot, and it is not intended as a place for residents. So, therefore, this is the reason for the request for the variance from that part of the zoning ordinance, and it was heard by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and the travel trailer is requested by Ms. Fedorovich to be her primary residence while her house is being remodeled. The... Ms. Fedorovich told the board members that she has a disability related to exposure to chemicals, and she's had it for several years. She will be unable to live in her house. They're removing the air conditioning ducts, they're changing the level of floors, and they're making it handicapped accessible. And after discussion and following the motion, a board member, James Johnson, seconded by board member J. Thomas Bell, the board voted unanimously to allow Ms. Fedorovich to live in a travel trailer during construction with a time limit of six months. The six-month time limit would start from the date of the building permit, and the building department would monitor the progress as the work progressed with the required inspection. This is the structural inspections, the electrical inspection, plumbing, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. If the work is not completed within the six months, then Ms. Fedorovich has to apply again. So, that is the recommendations transferred to you by the minutes of this board meeting.
Mr. Rumble, might we take those one by one then, please? Mr. Rummel, might we take those one by one then, please? With regard to the preliminary plant for Laurel Valley Court, which of course exists as proposed for construction in Ward Three. Mr. Webb, Mr. Rummel, and so forth, I remember very, very vividly Mr. Williams, the proposed developer, coming to my house, getting me in his pickup truck, taking me to his property over there, too concerned about city drainage and water and so forth. You remember the quagmire that was there, and it wasn't flowing and so forth. Of course, all these occasions, my question, what is going to be done about the drainage in this development when it is done? Has all that, the ramifications of all that been intended to?
This is only the preliminary plant, which...
I understand, what discussion has there been, if any, of that?
We've discussed at the initial meeting of the site planning new committee, which I'll let Mr. Webb.
People, of course, have to continue that drainage that was coming out of the existing phase of Greenbrier and incorporate his drainage into that drainage as it goes south across his block.
Do you know what he proposes at this point, underground?
Yes, sir. Yes, it will be fine.
Big pot. Then I would move approval of the preliminary plant of Laurel Valley Court subdivision.
We have any further discussion?
Again, with the condition that that drainage situation be very, very carefully looked at and addressed in the final plan.
It would have to come back before the, we, prior to starting new work with the water sewers, storm drains and street structures before we give him the permission to start new construction. And then, once that's in place and approved, we'll bring it back as a final plan with all of that work done.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. It brings us down to the second request for final approval of Pearson Place subdivision phase one.
I think we were going to take the next item that you addressed, Ms. Fedorovich request. Next, or do we do Pearson Place?
No, we did do Pearson Place as part of the...
There's the, there is one lot that has been built on, for the time of, this orthopedic surgeon's lot, immediately off, obviously. This was approved by the planning commission, you could build on one lot in the subdivision. And there can be no more construction or anything else on this final plant. It's approved on this. Sewer has been tested, the water has been tested, the runoff, landscaping setbacks have all been addressed. And the, as I said, the only problem that we have right now is the street is not paved now to the coal disaster because of the drainage issue, and it has just not been dried up the pavement.
So I know that we had a neighbor who had expressed some concerns about the drainage issue.
Concerns, we're right, and I think Mr. Webb met with us several times, and these were addressed in satisfactory manner, given we are all putting some attention to basins, and not this one, but the next two back up, the next two bases. And we've been kind of keeping an eye on it since it's brought to concern, and there's been no problem with it so far. But we feel like that once these two basins are put in, the next two phases, that definitely will...
So the basins are engineered to where they can handle the water that's going to be created and be properly maintained and all that good stuff?
And there won't be any problems with phase one?
Part of the problem that she was having was that her ditch, the ditch cross, that she was anticipating was that the ditch across the backside of her property was stopped up with trees and debris that either had fallen during the wind from the hurricane or that she had had cut and they had come all over you. So her ditch was causing some problem also. And I still think we need to straighten out that pipe going across the, that right-of-way, which we, we got reported to earlier, we haven't done that yet. But some of those pipes, they're concrete pipes, and they've, I don't know who put them in, but they've been in there a long time, and they have, some of them have shifted. But we do need to probably re-lay those pipes straight like they were originally, rather than causing two-ninety degree bends in that particular stream bill, which would cause erosion as well as a water backup.
Stuff that the city put in once won't have?
I really keen to answer that, I don't know. There's been some talk that the city put it in to use it as access to their well there on Parkdale, but I've always known we should come in off of...
Country Jones could have...
Yeah, Country Jones. We've always come in off of Park Circle there, not Park Circle, but Park Avenue. So I really don't know. Country probably put them in before he left. We're blaming it on him, but...
Bill, that's what we're fixing to do, you start blaming it for a whole lot.
Yeah, that's true. We give him some rip.
I would move approval of the preliminary, excuse me, this is the final plan, is phase one of Pearson Place subdivision.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Brings us down to consideration of board of appeals.
The mayor, mayor and board, I'm going to recommend approval of the Board of Adjustments action. It seems to me it's a reasonable accommodation given Ms. Fedorovich's disability, and therefore I'd move approval of the requested variance as recommended by the Board of Adjustments with the appropriate stipulations based on her medical condition.
Do we have a second to his motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion with a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, let me just briefly say that I'm going to respectfully disagree with my colleague from Ward Five on this motion. This type of matter has been before the board on repeated occasions over the course of years that have been on this board. In the past, I have had numerous constituents who have come before this board, have constituents in the Bablin Community, Fire Station Road, and on, in the Rock Hill Community with similar requests. As a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, my distinguished colleagues, I had a constituent whose trailer burned on his property in the Rock Hill Community. And once the trailer burned, the area had been annexed into the city, and the constituent could not put him over, home back on the property. Came to the city for relief, no relief. I want to share to the members of the board, this is a very important vote. If we do it for this one, you can rest assured, we're going to have requests after requests after requests. I know the gentleman from Ward Five means well, but sometimes we have to tell constituents, no, that we cannot do these things while they're not in the best interest of the city. I encourage my colleagues to defeat this motion, because this motion sets a very dangerous precedent. And I would like to say in closing, Mr. Mayor, that we need to make sure that we treat all citizens alike, and we have never had this type of request to come from the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. This type of matter has always originated from planning and zoning, and even if it did go to planning, we need to deny this request. I understand that the gentleman says that this particular constituent of his is on a disability. You know, I'm sympathetic to that. We get the same time, we cannot afford to establish this bad precedent with the city. Now, if you cash the yea vote for this motion, and that we have people from Ward One come, from Ward Two, Ward Three, Ward Four, others in Ward Five, and Ward Six, and Ward Seven, we will have put ourselves in a box to vote yea on that request. So in the best interest of the city, colleagues, I urge you to defeat this motion.
We've heard arguments, is there any further?
Yes, I have some. I would like to take what Alderman Perkins says, just a couple of steps forward and elaborate on a couple of things that he said. We have been told all these years that there is no such provision for a hardship situation in the zoning ordinance. As a result of that, we have turned down several requests that were indeed hardships. Mr. Perkins said there was no relief for the person that came. There was no relief because the city's ordinances did not provide for any relief. If we are into business of granting hardship exceptions to the zoning ordinance, not variances, never before has this been considered by a Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Then we need to amend the ordinance to allow for hardship exceptions, just not do it out of the clear blue. As important as that is, we've turned down citizens with similar types of requests, hardships and wanting some type of generic trailer to help their particular situation, and we have sympathized, but have always been told that there was no provision in the zoning ordinance for hardship exceptions.
So you're proposing that we make a provision and for hardship exceptions?
I'm saying if we're, if we're going to do something like that, then we need to amend the ordinance to make provision for such things, not just do something that's not provided for in our ordinance.
What I'm interested in, Mr. Perkins, is the individual turned down, that his trailer burned, was he asking for a temporary location or permanent location?
Well, Mr. Mayor, my recollection is that this particular individual wanted some relief so he can put a trail back onto his property.
That burned?
Yes, sir.
That it was for permanent purposes and not a temporary situation, is that correct?
Well, basically, he just made it clear that he wanted to put a trail back on his property, but the bottom line is, the board did not do it.
Was it permanent or temporary?
In that one case, he may have been asking for permanent. We've had other citizens request temporary situations that this board has turned down?
Well, maybe it's time for the board to say, develop a policy that would allow temporary situations.
If that be the case, for hardship exceptions, then we need to amend the ordinance to allow for that, and I certainly can deal with that.
I don't have a problem with that. Do we have any further discussion? We will take a hand vote on this. All those in favor of the motion that we have, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion denied.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I'm going to have to leave in about ten or fifteen minutes. I would like for the board to call up the matter on the feasibility study. I don't want to miss any important vote that may come up on the board tonight. I want to make sure and record on any vote that's taken on that.
Well, that would take us down to the engineering and streets. Mr. Webb, I think, has that feasibility study ready for us, and he was instructed to do.
This is an aerial view of the property in question, in our attempt to show the locations of both Stark Road coming up from the south, as well as Hospital Road going east and west. We were in good, do a feasibility study in the cost estimate on this particular piece of property. We used the, we sighted it, the same structures as we had designed for our Highway Twenty-Five bypasses per your instructions. We sighted it backed up to that pond there. That pond is an existing piece of city property. It's about a fifteen acre, actually started out being a sewage lagoon, and has since been discontinued use as a sewage lagoon. There's a pumping station sticking right out in that road, rectangle right to the light up. That pumping station will also be discontinued in the near future when we get through the artery down to the new pumping station just north of the intersection of Highway Twenty-Five and bypass eighty-two. That, that location would tie city properties together if we choose that city, that location for the municipal complex. That's why we incited that at that point. In your package, there's also a blow up of that particular area, a area proposal up of that particular area, and a cost breakdown showing the different costs for the different pieces of work that would be required on that particular site. The municipal complex, the police department, all works considered, these are figures that actually were derived, came from the Chaytor architects. The building cost, including sixty-two parking places for the police department, the total cost for the police department, which does not include, of course, any land cost, but does include some site prep work. Cost for the building project for the police department was five point four-five, five point four-seven-five million dollars, the municipal court portion of it, including the remaining portion of the parking area to get us up to one hundred and twenty, which was an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for additional parking on that site. The total cost for the municipal court was two point one nine-two million dollars. Total cost for the buildings, police and the court would be seven point six-seven million dollars. Fast paid infrastructure cost, bearing in mind that there are no roads out there now, we would have to extend Stark Road or Hospital Road, or both, to get a road out to the site. The roads and drainage for both roads would cost three point one-five million dollars, another three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the water and sewer along those roads to get to that site. For a total cost, rejected cost of the whole project, buildings, water, sewer, roads and all, eleven point two million dollars. And of course, it is structurally feasible to put it out there, but the cost would be, of course, will be an economic consideration that you would have to make. Are there any questions?
Did you talk to Mr. Stark about this particular location of this, right here at the intersection there?
Yes, sir.
And he was agreeable with that particular location?
Yes, sir.
What type of timeline would it take for placing the infrastructure needs in?
I would imagine it would take about a part of a year to put the roads in. There's a fairly good sized bridge that happens, that happens to be put across, that creek coming down. You've seen that creek right there off the end, it starts off, it's Hospital Road, there is running Stark Road, where that starts that creek. I would think that infrastructure would take about a year.
And?
We're talking about just about, just under two miles of road.
Is that for both Stark and Hospital, or is that?
I would, I would think that if you could, it might take a little longer to do both of them. We'd certainly get one of them done in one year and start on the other. If you let them both at the same time, it's pretty difficult to go. Of course, there's no access, you have to get the roads in or the road bed in, so the building would, it would start till a certain point after that.
Did you talk to Ed any about running electricity out?
I did not. We've got electricity to that pumping station, so our building should be available. Is that full plan? We got it to that property right behind it, so.
So that wouldn't be a... Okay, so that wouldn't be a?
Other questions from board members?
Has the sewage lagoon behind the proposed site been, is it gonna be cleaned up? I mean, what, can you give me an idea of the quality of the water?
I would think that in some period of time, that that lagoon probably will be built. It's not been used as a sewer to go in for years, except in the stream emergency. And there's a portion of it separated from the rest of it that is used for that overflow, that's separated from the main portion of it. But I would say that just about fifteen, ten to fifteen acre lake pond out there. I'm sure there could be some uses put to it that are loaded in for just a pond, if we say so.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Mayor, you gonna rescind your veto and let the people vote on site?
Not tonight, or any other time.
Okay, so we're not gonna have a vote on the site then?
That's correct.
All right, so we need to proceed and be about our business of trying to come up with a site for this ourselves, is what you're telling me?
Basically.
All right. Bill, you said approximately a year once we let the contracts for these roads, correct? Before we could even start building on them?
That would be my guess, yes, sir.
So we realistically be talking about what type of timeframe before we could actually start construction on this municipal justice complex out there?
Before we start the building?
Yeah, the building.
I would say it would be sometime, not this coming summer, but next summer. And of course, we could possibly make some arrangement with the contractor. I wouldn't necessarily want to do that to allow the construction to go over the road bed, but that causes a whole other set of problems. At one contract, I found another contract Friday, so I've run a bit of slave to slave there. But a year from now, we're not a good amount, though, we're gonna get the engineer.
Right.
So we're looking probably.
Two thousand and seven, this summer.
Late summer, probably, yeah.
We've gotta come up with money to do it first, you know?
Right, but I mean, even if, just assuming we had, because of sweep accounts, you generated the money to build the roads for us?
We generated a lot amount of sweep accounts, we have.
You got three million to build some roads?
Don't have three million to build some roads.
Gentlemen, if you can offer a motion, I'm gonna have to leave. I want to vote for go.
All right, well, it would seem to me that, that this site for this particular project, if we're gonna proceed and try to get this thing built, and keeping in mind that putting off and delaying increases construction costs, and we've already increased construction costs due to certain delays incurred on this project. I don't see this as a feasible site for this particular project. I still want to say that I want to proceed and investigate any possible way to extend these roads and also put this infrastructure in place, but for this particular project, don't see it as a feasible location with all things considered. And I don't know if we need a board motion or can agree on consensus on that or not. Would you like a motion, Mr. Perkins?
Whatever the gentleman Ward wants to do.
All right, well, I'll offer that as a motion then.
Would you restate that, please?
That based on a variety of issues, including the timing of this construction and, and costs, that we eliminate the Stark property for this particular project, not eliminating the pursuit of these roads this term in our work as we move forward.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion with a second. Would any of you like to discuss it publicly?
Mr. Mayor, very grateful before I depart, I just want to go on record to say that I am in opposition to this motion because it does not call for and provide for a non-binding referendum to determine the public will concerning the location, configuration and financing of a police department and a municipal court facility. Thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second. Did you wanna say something?
I won't make a comment, too. Remember, he's got a living here, short. I understand. Having, I'll be brief. Having heard for over two years, let the people vote, it's certainly disappointing to me that we are not letting the people vote. We are to the point where the mayor and a minority of board can simply prevent that from occurring. The thing that constantly nags at me is that we need a police facility and we need it desperately. And while I certainly prefer to let the people vote, the need for a facility will require me to join in voting with my colleague from Ward One and I assume it's Mullen for the motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
You certainly may.
I concur with my colleague, Mr. McLaurin. I do think that this is something that the people need to have a voice in, and I am going to support the motion made by Alderman Davis, but it's not saying that I am agreeing that we need to only look at the sites that's already on the table. So I wanted to be clear on that, that my vote with Alderman Davis is not a vote saying that I support the proposed sites that's on the table.
Everyone's had an opportunity to say something. I think we'll call for a vote now for the show of hands. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Perkins, you may want to, I've got one more motion to offer. I'll make it quickly, and as long as you stay, depends on how long you can talk, so. I'd also like to offer a motion that Mr. Webb do get with Mr. Schaefer or appropriate people and provide a similar study of the Coke plant site for presentation at our next board meeting. And while you're at it, also look at the downtown scenario that has been batted around and provide actual hard numbers rather than off-the-cuff things as well. Also, can you get that done by our next board meeting?
Sure, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think most of that information's available for you, Bill. I think that's very favorable. We have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that as well.
We have a motion with a second. Do we need to have further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Thank you, Bill.
Post-bridge location over the Lindbergh ditch. Since this was put together, I think we have all met with Mr. Henry and have discussed moving the bridge back further south to get it even further away from the residential neighborhood, which would be somewhere right along in this area. It'll be about ninety, I think ninety feet further south. He has agreed to do that, and I think that works better for Mr. Davis and Mr. Cox, and he has no problem with it. So given the fact that he's going to build this, city specifications to carry the hydraulic capacity of water for the drainage structure as well as the vehicular capacity, we see no problem with it.
One thing I'd like for us to, in addition to moving the bridge, but also like, since this structure was grandfathered under our landscape ordinance, I would like.
Oh, the building?
Yeah, the building. Not, not the bridge, the building itself, the property in question. Like to place on a condition of accepting this bridge that they come into compliance with our current landscape ordinance. And I believe Alderman Cox has talked to Mr. Henry about this, and he didn't.
Sure, we're able to do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you put that in your motion? I assume that you're making the motion.
Yeah, that's my word. Then I guess I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Henry's proposal to build this bridge to city specs with the engineers' consent at the designated crossover of the Lindbergh Street ditch on the, at the southern entrance to that property. And also that Mr. Henry will bring this particular property into conformity with our current landscape ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. That brings us down to the office of the city clerk. How are you?
My first item is the claims document. Without processing the procedures having been performed, I recommend that the board approve the claims document as soon as.
Based on the recommendation of the city clerk, recommend approval of the claims document.
We have a motion to approve the claims document. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Any questions? If there are no further questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Your second request, please.
Thank you. My second request is the filling the position of the county receivable clerk in the city clerk's office. We had eighteen applications. Four of them were selected to be interviewed. Out of the four, one declined citing the level of compensation. One did not show at the scheduled time, so we interviewed two candidates. And the interview committee consisted of myself, the C.A.R., Ms. Brule, the administrative assistant, and the city clerk, Ms. Gandy. And it was unanimously agreed upon that Ms. Bassett was most qualified for the county receivable position. Therefore, I recommend and request that Ms. Bassett be offered a lateral transfer from code compliance to a county receivable to be effective immediately.
I would move that Ms. Bassett be, that we authorize the transfer of Ms. Bassett from the building code's office, planning department as code compliance officer to the city clerk's office as the assigned county receivable clerk at the existing grade step in salary.
I'll second the motion from my esteemed colleague from Ward Three.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thanks, ma'am. Brings us down to the electric department. Edward?
As Mr. Haddaway's come to, I may ask a question.
Sure.
Mr. McLaurin?
I'm sorry?
Did y'all talk about this in O and O? Was this one of the things y'all talked about?
The Alex Bassett. It has been mentioned that O and O before, yes.
Did y'all give any discussion to go ahead and advertise him for her now vacated position in building codes?
We were actually gonna wait for some guidance from Mr. Rumble. Do you have some initial thoughts on that at the moment? Is that something you'd like?
No. I'll have, no, I'll have to think about that.
Think about that?
Because I'll probably have to do some rearranging of the process.
Okay, so actually, that's what we were waiting on, was for Mr. Rumble to come with his recommendation.
Mayor and board, I request authorization for same grant of the tenet TVA syngonizer chain class in Nashville, Tennessee from August sixth to the seventh of this year.
I believe that's April, not August.
April, excuse me.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Every, your second request?
In order to, to again close out on our Highway twelve lighting project, I would request the board authorize the mayor to sign a change order and a substantial completion for this project. The change order will be in a minus forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, and this would be for owner supplied material that was used on the job.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. Question number three.
Mayor and board, we went out for sealed bids for three different items. Item number one was the, for the purchase of a material handling bucket truck. We had two bidders. One was Terrence Utilities of Birmingham, Alabama for eight thousand, eight and a half. The other was Truck Center of Tupelo, Mississippi for eighty-six thousand, four thirty-three. I would recommend that Terrence Utilities of Birmingham be given the.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Brings us down to item four.
The second item we went out for sealed bids on was for a new computer billing system. We only had one app, one response, that was from Southeastern Data Cooperative for a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and six dollars. And I would recommend that we be allowed to contract with this company behind our computer data system.
Ed, you've previously talked to us about the type of savings that we achieved if we went to this system. Could you just briefly mention that again?
We looked at costs based on what we were actually paying our present vendor and what we're projecting, same cost divided by another vendor, and it looked like we were gonna be able to save approximately four thousand dollars a month just on data handling by a different company. Plus, the data, all of our data would be carried in-house rather than being located at an off-site computer system. And we felt like that would be better for us as well. It gave us more controllability over all of our accounts and where that we were charged on the different printouts and things that different city officials asked through the body. With this new system that we were looking at, it would not cost us anything other than the time and materials to do that.
There's also a service component, if I remember correctly. What did this allow us to do? Could you touch on that again?
It also gave us the ability to set up remote teller, off-premises tellers. In other words, we could set up a remote teller, say at Walmart or one of the grocery stores, or say the Union at Mississippi State, and anyone could actually access their account and actually pay their bill from that remote teller at any time of day or night. It would also presently, our, when you pay an account, pay your account, it's actually not posted until the next day. With the systems that we looked at, most of those would allow for instant, the instant translation, the instant posting of the paid bill. So that was plus force, too. It also gave us the ability to use credit cards, different credit cards, and be able to take those. And we felt like that's time that we were able to do that.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I remember when the technology committee looked at this issue, and I think that all the members of that committee were fairly impressed by what was being offered. Will there be any issues with transitioning from our current provider to this new?
I don't think so. I believe everything will go smooth from everything we've been talking about, our personal provider. I believe everything goes smooth in time. But it will take, it will take a little time to make this full transition.
In that event, and as chairman of the technology committee, I would like to motion approval of it. But.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Edward, you've got one more thing. We struck item five, we're down to item six.
Father, Mayor and board, I would request approval of signing, allowing the mayor to sign a contract for contract metering with Randy Holcomb of North Mississippi Utility Service for the next four years on this metering contract. Mr. Holcomb bid sixty-two cents for a later mayor and seventy-two cents.
Mr. Holcomb bids, bids sixty-two cents for electric meter and seventy-two cents for water meter. The overcharge is sixty-five cents for electric and forty-seven-two cents for water. And he does an extremely good job. He's presently working for us. And I feel like that he will continue to do a good job. And I would highly encourage that he be approved.
Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of the meter reading contract with Randy Holcomb.
Second.
Motion with a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Edward. Public services.
First item is, this is the second year of our three-year contract with Pelham Chemical for herbicide spraying in Starkville. And as allowed by the contract, he has requested a three point eight percent increase in pricing citing fuel increases and chemical cost increases as a reason. And I would like to request approval from the board for this price increase.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second, the motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Would you have any discussion?
What would happen if we don't approve this rate increase, Doug?
We'd have to go back out and rebid. We got their bids last year. We only had two bidders and the other bidder was about twice as much as we were. And he's done a pretty good job.
Will you make sure he goes and sprays the Lindbergh D S A P, please, sir? Because the weeds are already starting to grow.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Brings you down for consideration hiring a part-time person.
Yeah, as many of you know out at the landfill, we run it with only two full-time employees. And it's open six days a week. And that means by design that only one person is out there on Saturdays and Mondays. And this has concerned me for quite some time now, that the fact that anything can happen in the workplace. A guy can have a medical emergency. He could be running the bulldozer on the slope and it could turn over. So I would like to request approval from the board to hire a part-time person that we can use about nineteen hours a week to be there on the days that, on Saturdays and Mondays. And then also fill in when there are vacations and illnesses. And the days that we don't have a part-time person available, I can pull from some of the other departments.
Mr. Mayor and Board, this also is an item that the O and O committee considered. And I forgot to bring it forward when we were doing the others. And we determined that we would recommend, particularly if it could be a part-time person, this to you for your consideration. It is a safety issue as well as a personnel issue.
So it's informed in motion.
I would move that we approve the part-time position for the rubbish landfill. Are you, let me sidetrack just a moment. You said nineteen hours a week, that's what you're planning?
Yeah, that's according to what I was told by John when he was here, is that we want to delimit part-time employees to nineteen hours a week, which gets us out of certain types of, of some important recording and that type of situation.
Okay, the part-time individual under the terms specified here, per hourly rate and number of hours to be worked, eight dollars and nineteen rest费.
Do we have a second?
I have the other.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Doug. Sanitation department.
In, Mayor and Board, our respects with respect, as we come to all to high, request to advertise for a labor position in Sanitation Department.
Have the budget meeting, I don't have the meeting, please.
This is a replacement position.
Oh, yeah. And yes, O and O did discuss this also. Is it not the one we talked about then?
This took, at the last meeting?
At the last meeting.
No, I.
We did not.
No, sir, we did not.
I stand corrected. I was thinking it was the Wicks position.
This is the Wicks.
I know, but I stand corrected that way.
Me too.
I would move that we authorize for advertising for this replacement position, a full-time labor position in Sanitation Department.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Your second, my second.
Second, I'm requesting authorization to return the sideways and front dived North American Company's last phase of buy on April third, eight two thousand and six.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion with a, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Let's show by hands, all those in favor? Oh, good, this is going to be a tie. All those opposed? I voted in favor of her going. Thank you. That's wonderful, kidding vote, yeah. I think that's all the items that we have.
Doesn't it make you feel good to get a vote? Don't you wish you could stand that opportunity and argue around?
No, I like the veto. This brings us to a conclusion. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So you only want to vote with you vote.
That's what it says.
In all, it's what it sounds like to me. And out of all the persons, I would say we stand in recess until a regular meeting of the board was to double the.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.